Hello and welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley, joined today by founder of Get Oiling Greg Kilwin. Hey Greg.
Hey everyone, really glad to hear today.
And welcome to another edition. We also have our incredible team Colin and Julie here with us today. What's up you guys? Good to have you.
Hello.
How's it going everyone?
And we also have, as you may notice, a couple of special guests here today. We have Hannah and Teresa who will be bringing out to chat with us soon. Good morning. Hi. Morning for you.
Yeah, a little bit, yeah.
So we're thrilled to have you here today. As you're coming in, let us know where in the world you are, which you're excited to learn about today. I'm excited to share with you guys. And of course, we'll get into our slides here in just a moment. But you guys, we're going to be talking about not just how you can save time as a practice, but we're going to be sharing new content that you can be adding to your good oiling system to save you even more time than what we'll be talking about here today. So welcome. Hey, look, there we got some folks here from Oklahoma, your neck of the woods. You guys out there, you guys are in Kansas City, right? Missouri?
Yeah.
Yeah, fantastic. So again, excited to have you guys here today. Let's go ahead and pop out of our video. We'll get into some slides just to get our housekeeping out of the way for today. And then we've got again, some just super exciting stuff to share with you. So let's get into this. Today, we're talking about how we can save time with saved replies. And we're going to be learning how to do that with some awesome resources from our friends here today from Monthly Content Club. So what's happening today? We've got, of course, our saved replies. We'll talk about what they are in Get Oiling, where you can use them, and then we'll get into some free resources created by our friends Hannah and Teresa here today. And we'll talk about how you can use those in your system and other amazing things that you can get from Monthly Content Club. And they are our newest, latest, greatest content partners. So we are so excited to have them working with us and for them to be creating incredible content that you can plug and play in your Get Oiling system to save you time. And of course, as always, as we do on these calls, we have live help and Q and A at the close. If you have questions, if you've come here looking for help or support today, you are in the right place. Make sure that you add those questions to the Q and A here live on the Zoom call. If you're joining us in our Facebook group, feel free to ask questions in the comment thread there. And if you would like to make sure you're joining us on a call like this one, maybe you're in our Facebook group right now and you're like, wait, 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 how do I get on this call? Or if you would like to join us and you're watching us from a YouTube replay, go to getoiling.com/weeklyworksession where you can sign up to be the first to know about what we'll be talking about each week. You'll be the first to get resources that are provided as well as our replays. And if you're looking for help or support on a live call like this one, go to getoiling.com/web site review. If you sign up using this link, this is free to you as a member of the Get Oiling community. We set aside time at the close of our calls, like we have today, for us to work one-on-one, whether that's reviewing the content that you've been putting onto a website, your strategy, or maybe you're just getting started with all of this and wanting to figure out where your feet go first. We can help you figure that out. Sign up here to get exclusive one-on-one time. And then, of course, as always, if you join us on a live call like this and you ask questions, we will figure it out and make time to get your questions answered. And then finally, if you are wanting help with getting things done, if you have an idea of what you would like, but you would like to skip the learning curve and hand it off to someone who knows what they're doing, you can go to getoiling.com/conseilers, learn about our incredible team and how they can help your business. Now, question for you guys. Head into the chat and let me know the answer to this. On a scale of one to 10, how confident and maybe how confident and quick are you where it comes to what to say when a customer or maybe even a lead asks you a question? Or when it's time to engage and educate? So if you have a scenario where you are communicating with somebody who's maybe a fairly new customer and they're interested in maybe learning a bit more about how they could support their healthy energy levels in their body, do you feel super confident in being able to say, you know what? I actually think that this resource could help you. Here it is. Or if you know about Nutmeg, or you know about one of our endocrine supporting supplements or oil blends, right? We got a five. You guys don't be shy, head over into the chat. What does this look like for you honestly? Fives? Okay, okay. So we're right in the middle there. So we feel like we maybe know a little bit about our own story, right? Our own experience, but where it comes to being able to support and educate more broadly, that's that is where the question comes in, right? That's where we slide down from maybe the higher numbers into the lower ones. Follow-up question for you. How much time do you spend on researching, compiling and sharing information so that you can inform and educate your customers or even your leads? Perhaps even yourself? What does that look like for you? Do you spend a lot of time on that? Lots, yes. I'm seeing that. This is actually where we find the majority of us as brand partners. People are supporting a base of customers and educating a community who we might convince to give Young Living a shot. What we're doing the majority of time is trying to figure out what to say, right? When to say it? What piece of information is going to be the best thing to share? Is it something that I need to know and fit into my brain? Or is it something that I could file away and easily access later? There is a lot of work that goes in to the encyclopedic knowledge that is brand partnership. And the important thing that we always have to remember as brand partners is that our job is not to be the encyclopedia, but to point to the page, right? Or better, just to point to the book and tell somebody how to open the book and find the answer that they're looking for, right? That's the duplicable thing for us to do, not to know it all, but to know how to show where someone ought to go to get the answers that they're looking for. Now, saved replies and Get Oiling is our topic today. And the reason why I wanted to share saved replies with you specifically this perspective is that one of the most incredible ways you can save yourself time without feeling like you have to be an absolute expert in all things oily is for you to get content from other people who love creating content and are really great at doing it. And if you go to our content page from the Get Oiling website, you can actually see all of the folks that we are partnered up with who produce content on a monthly basis that you can plug into your Good Oiling system as well as creators who have courses and things like that that also include content that plugs into your Good Oiling system. Today, you're going to meet Teresa and Hannah of Monthly Content Club. And they have put together some free resources for you that actually are, the bulk of them are saved replies. And we're going to talk about all the different ways we can use them. So saved replies and Get Oiling, if you are not familiar, this is a feature in Get Oiling. It's a personal favorite of mine because of all of the many, many different ways you can use this feature. So this begins as a feature as a way for you to take an email that you might send frequently, maybe a welcome to Young Living email or something like that, or a first of the month, like a newsletter, something that you send on a regular basis. And you can have it already prepared for you to just plug into a message that you're about to send. Maybe you make some modifications and you send it off. And this is, you know, the, the subject line, the body, all of it, all included, all the links, the images, the formatting, everything is there, right? We have templates for saved replies that you can use to create messages that you, you might want to format in a particular way, or you can totally build your own. Or in the case of what you'll see today, you can get them pre-made, pre-written for you. And again, this can be entire emails, including their subject lines. But this can also be sections of, of emails. These can be text messages. And this content that you could create also plugs into other places on your site. So you can have something that you love that maybe talks about a subject that's really important that you want to make sure that you cover maybe this week in an email. But maybe in two months, you want it to be a blog post. You can take a saved reply and make it a blog post. You can use saved replies to populate your blog posts. You can also use your safe replies for those of you who are educating and serving your customers inside of a member area in Get Oiling. You can create lessons in online classes with these saved replies as well. So this is one tool that can be used in a lot of different ways. You can use it to build campaigns, to send a message now, to, to pull down information that you want to quickly insert into a class, a post or a message. So much you can do with this. And so I'm so excited to share with you guys and to introduce you to Hannah and Teresa. So if, go ahead right now and go to getoiling.com/mcc. Scroll down on the page there and you will see where they have freebies for you. This includes social posts as well. There are graphics in here that you can use for a lot of different things. And you've got this awesome resource bundle where you've got a campaign as well as a bunch of awesome saved replies that include copies or words as well as images. And we'll take a look at those in just a bit. Actually, want to talk through these with, with Hannah and Teresa. So you guys can learn more about what these are and the different awesome ways that you can use them. So let's go get to know our new friends of Monthly Content Club and learn how to use and reuse those saved replies. And then, of course, as always, we will get into our discussion, live help and Q and A. So welcome you guys. We're so excited to have you here today. Tell us a little bit, maybe first, what you, you know, what's your background with Young Living? How did you guys get started in all of this?
Yeah, go ahead Teresa. I got started about 10 years ago, which is crazy to say now, feels like a really long time. But at the time, I had a daughter who needed support with some health issues. And this was me. I didn't just dip a toe. I dove into a world that I'd never even heard of previously. And Young Living ended up absolutely changing our lives. So much so that I'm one of those people that didn't really start off with the intention of becoming a brand partner, but just had a radical life change for my family. And naturally then was so excited to share with people the possibilities that Young Living can bring to their life in, in all areas, health and wellness, but then also as a brand partner down the road.
Yeah, I'm Hannah. I'm so excited to be here. I also started my Young Living business 10 years ago this month. It was October of 2013, but I started as a brand partner. And I was, I was 25 when I got started with Young Living. I was changing my entire life. Recently gotten married. I had recently like become enlightened and awakened to how like toxic and poisonous our world was. And Young Living was like that perfect divine puzzle piece that fell in my lap that answered all of the questions, gave me tools and resources, gave me peace of mind that I was looking for. And so I like to say, I like literally grew up with Young Living because I didn't know anything about healthy living. I had never cared about my health and wellness before at that point. And I had, I always wanted to be an entrepreneur, but I had no idea what type of business I wanted to do. I'd tried my hand at a whole bunch of different things that made me maybe a few hundred dollars, but were never going to be something that I could replace, you know, a desk job income with and make this my full-time career. And so when I got started in 2013, very reluctantly, I didn't think I wanted to be part of this type of business, but I quickly found out it was totally different than what I thought, probably like many of your experiences were. And I fell in love with the education part and the content creation part of this business, like more than any probably other aspect. I loved teaching people and I loved creating fun resources, learning how to create graphics. I was terrible at that when, you know, 10 years ago. But I just had to really cut my teeth on that. And so I really fell in love with educating people and teaching people the same things that I had learned, maybe just a few months or a few years prior. And so just fell in love with this type of work. And so then fast forward to last year, Teresa and I were in each other's education groups on Facebook. And we would often like see each other's posts and send each other a message and be like, hey, can I grab that? That was a great graphic. That was a great write-up. And we were just kind of borrowing each other's content. And frequently I would suffer from being inconsistent because if there wasn't a day where I could either grab a friend's post or have the mind space and time to sit down and think of some quality content to create, I would not post and I would not engage and educate with my team. And so sometimes a week would go by or more where I was not, oh, sorry, my light went off. I was not engaging with my team or doing any kind of education. And that was really causing my engagement and, and the quality of education I was providing my team to suffer. So we put our heads together and said, hey, we're already doing this, creating content on a fairly consistent basis, but we could stand to have a strategy and we could probably serve other brand partners if we created a content strategy and provided content for other people who are probably struggling with the same things that we did. And so from that Monthly Content Club was born and I'll kind of let Teresa take over and tell the rest of our business story.
Well, that's really where we started. And I'll have to say that we both thought that we were killing it in the education department. We were like, we are just doing awesome. We need to be able to share this with other people. And we quickly found that once we developed an intentional strategy, once we sat down and as we prepared for the next month, thought about what do people need? What are they searching for? What's going on in their lives in this season of the year? Or culturally, what's happening that we can help them to be prepared for? We quickly learned that we were leveling up. And that's really what Monthly Content Club did for our businesses personally, to be able to offer our own customers. Something we always talk about, there being really three pillars of growth for Young Living, serving potential customers, our current customers and brand partners. And so as Monthly Content Club, we strive to educate and empower other customers and brand partners to be able to educate on those things and to do so consistently in a way that your customer is then empowered, like you were talking about, Ashley, that they would know where to go. They have a common resource and they're able to share things with confidence. Because we have spent a lot of time looking behind the scenes, wondering if Googling for a right graphic, I cannot tell you how many hours of my life I've wasted doing that. And so it's just brought a lot of joy to be able to provide resources that we needed as brand partners. I wish that this would have existed five or 10 years ago. And so it's been really satisfying and really fun to be able to create this for ourselves and then to share this with the Young Living community at large.
Awesome. So what does that look like now? It's you have your Monthly Content Club. You've got folks who are subscribing and getting this content from you, what you use to level up. They're using to level up as well. What do those tools look like for you guys?
Well, we offer a variety of different services. We have a couple subscriptions. And then we also offer some à la carte classes. So I'll let Hannah and I can just take a couple. Our OG subscription is called Monthly Content Club. And so this is something that provides educational and engaging content either used in a Facebook education group for an email series, a text series. You could use it as a class in the Good Oiling platform or via email or text there as well. It includes graphics and the text portion, what we refer to as a post. And so that is a way that you're able to know that you consistently have something that is timely and relevant to share with your customers on a monthly basis. So that's a reoccurring subscription. And then we also offer another subscription called IPA Every Day. As a brand partner, I can't tell you how many times I would wake up and I would be like, what should I talk about today? There are so many things that Young Living has to offer that can transform lives. And sometimes there's a sense of overwhelm of, well, what, what do I start with? What do I share today? And so IPA Every Day gives you a social media prompt via text and allows you to have kind of some guidance and direction in terms of how to engage with your current customers, how to show up consistently online, and then how to engage with your audience at large to be sharing with them in a way that not is just constantly sprouting off about products, but that allows you to connect and improve your relationship, to grow together with them so that when you make valuable offers, they are ready to listen and ready to move forward with you on those offers. So Hannah, do you want to cover some of our other subscriptions?
Yeah. So our next one is called the Monthly Drop. And I would say, did we start this in July? We, we kind of, we did the MCC. We started the Monthly Content Club subscription for Facebook groups primarily is how we got our start in that. And then we kind of put our heads together again and started thinking like, what else do brand partners need on a monthly basis? And it kept coming up, a monthly newsletter that we could create for our customers to be able to send out, you know, kind of the monthly beginning of the month broadcast, everything that's going on in Young Living. As we know, there's always lots of announcement. There's lots of new products. There's lots of new things that start at the first of every month. And that can also contribute to a feeling of overwhelm of how do I communicate this information in a way that's not only going to capture the attention of my customer and my team, but also look nice, right? I've sent a lot of really ugly newsletters at the beginning of the month blast because I feel, I felt overwhelmed at like, I don't know how to make it pretty, but I just need to get this information out. And so we created the Monthly Drop as a customizable newsletter. We offer this in a couple of different formats, but we have just recently formatted it to be a page on your Good Oiling system that you will, we're going to give you a resource bundle. There are a very few customizations that you will add, like your own picture at the bottom and things like that, very few things. And then you can save and publish that to your Good Oiling site and send a text or an email out to your team that says, hey, happy November. Click this button to see our Monthly Drop Team Newsletter. And it'll, it'll take you to a page on your Good Oiling website with the URL that has your November newsletter. So you can use that all month long. You can send that in your email campaigns. You can use it on your blog posts. You can drop it in your Facebook groups or in your vaults. And we make sure that that is always relevant information for that month. So it's not just a, you know, generic November fall themed. It's going to have all of the announcements, announcements that Young Living makes at the beginning of November. We try to include all of that relevant information for you so that you're not having to source that other places because we know the feeling. And then our final subscription is actually a community group and a training course called Brand Partner Hub. Currently, this exists on a Facebook group, but behind the scenes, Teresa and I are working on making this Get Oiling friendly. And we're really excited for what we have planned in the future. It's going to take us a little bit to get it all working perfectly for you guys. But we're so excited to be able to offer a comprehensive brand partner training course. That's what this currently is. So for $15 a month, you get access to all of our training courses. We have them organized into very short videos and we cover all of the basic information that a brand partner would need to know getting started their business, literally from how do I become a brand partner? All the way down to some pretty in-depth compensation plan, training, strategic placement, all of that stuff. So we worked really hard on making those videos very simple, short, accessible for you. And all of those are housed in a Facebook group so that you can get in there and add your brand partners in there if you would like to have kind of a training community. And we also, and there, we also provide a daily income producing activity checklist where we post in the mornings and we give you a few things, people to reach out to, ideas for you to connect with your team, to make sure you're doing those consistent things that actually build your business on a firm foundation. And then we give you a daily prompt for something to share on social media that's a little bit different every single day. So those are our two other subscriptions, really fun things that we provide.
Awesome. Okay, go ahead, go ahead.
Oh, I was just going to say, in addition to that, we do offer some à la carte classes. So right now, some things that we have just made Get Oiling friendly. We have Dr. Mom Wellness Cabinet Essentials and then a class called Love Your Guts, all about gut health. These are two things that we have found are very timely for the season that we're in and that serve our customers, both in terms of a class, an email or a text series. But as we were talking the other day, for instance, our Dr. Mom Wellness class is going to talk about probiotics and how that helps gut health. So since we have saved replies on there, if you have a customer message you and say, hey, can you tell me a little bit about Young Living's probiotic? And why, why it would be good for me? You could actually use that saved reply to give them an in-depth look at all of the benefits of what Life9 or Mighty Pro might do for them without having to go and spend a lot of time doing research, typing it up, all of that. You have it ready to go at your fingertips, which I think is really an incredible tool as a brand partner.
Yeah, absolutely. And we're going to actually show some of what Teresa was just talking about here in just a second. But I want to draw you guys' attention. If you have not done this yet, getoiling.com/mcc. And I want you to head right here. This is free. I want you to make sure you take advantage of this right now. You're going to add it to cart and check out. It is free. Of course, if you would like to add on one of their other subscriptions, by all means do it. I've seen the page in the works for the newsletter, you guys. It's amazing. Definitely check it out. That's going to be of course, ready, you know, when Young Living announces what all of the gifts with purchases are, right? So it's not something we could show you right now, but that is in the works. Now, when you claim that freebie that I just showed you guys right here, you're going to get access to a resource bundle link and it's going to send you to a page that looks just like this, that has their pretty faces and a bunch of information about how you can use this bundle. Now, I'm going to go in and in Jane's account here, I'm going to claim this bundle. We're going to go take a look at some of these pieces of content you guys are going to be getting inside of this freebie. So which one should we use? But what do we want to? What do we want to do? Maybe how about a Great Day Diffuser Blend? Or do you want another one? We can do any of them.
No, that one's fine. I was going to say either that one or the roller recipes are both, they're all cute in my opinion. So.
Awesome. You're partial, I know. Okay, so here is an example. So this is a saved reply, right? And in saved replies, you do have a subject line here that's going to mean that this is, this is a pure, a complete email that's pre-written, ready to go, right? So you can actually send this out. But here you have some copy here. You've got a great graphic that's got some awesome diffuser recipes in it. And, and of course, in this case, it specifies this was scheduled for a Friday, but you could of course, change what's here. And then this link to the Great Day Protocol, it's going to the Young Living blog. Pretty awesome. And you also have a text version of this. So let's talk about the different ways that you could use this, you guys. Maybe you were communicating like, like Teresa was just saying with a customer who had a question about, you know, like, hey, what, what is this thing about the Great Day Protocol? Like, how can I, you know, how can I start using some of this? Or maybe they have a question about immune support. You can go and grab this saved reply and just shoot a message off to them that has this information, right? So let's just go pretend that we are chatting with me. And we'll do that. So we're going to send me an email. And from our saved replies, what was this one called? This is called Great Day Diffuser Blends. So I'm going to go to saved replies and I'm going to look for, here we go, Great Day Diffuser Blends. And it's right there, ready to go. Maybe next week I am putting together, or six months from now, I'm putting together a campaign that I want to use. I've got, you know, a monthly engagement that I want to run. And I want to put together some different resources that fit the theme that I'm going for right now. Well, when I'm creating that campaign, I can actually pop this saved reply right into it. So if I'm, well, maybe I'll just use an existing one. So we'll pretend that this is the one that is the campaign that I've created. I want to add a new message. And I can go into saved replies and again, find that Great Day Diffuser Blend. I can modify this to my liking. It'll be a little different here than it would be in the one that I sent to the person that, that had that question for me. Maybe I want to write a blog post about the Great Day Protocol. And I want to include my Great Day Diffuser Blends. So if I am writing a blog post, I can create a new one. And here again, I can pop that Great Day Diffuser Blend right into the blog post. Make some modifications, maybe go over here to write with AI, give it some of the copy that's already there. Tell it about Gary's Great Day Protocol and then ask for a blog post of a thousand words, right? Maybe focusing on some keywords. And then finally, if you are at a place in your business where you have created a hub of education in a member area on your Good Oiling site, you can use this for that too. If you're, if you're going to get content, use it everywhere. You can use it so people can continually access it. So I'm going to show you guys how to do that. And in the meantime, I'm going to kick it back over to you guys. Keep talking. Let's, let's hear some more about ways that you guys use the content that we're talking about here. Cause I know this started off with social media, but it's expanded into so much more, right?
Yes, absolutely. So we, one thing I love about the saved replies that we created because Ashley kind of, we've kind of tossed around ideas about how is our content best serving the Get Oiling community instead of just a Facebook group. And so, you know, we were like, well, do you send a daily email? And I know that some of her subscribers actually do that and her team loves it. She pops our monthly content. So we, what, when you have a monthly content club subscription, you actually get a copy and a graphic for almost every day of the month. There's a few days that we encourage, you know, a live video on your social media or just a quick, a quick text or a quick, quick tip or something like that. But for most days of the month, we provide a fresh set of graphics and copy for you to educate about something. And so you can actually have a, you could set up a campaign where you have a, a daily email or text that goes out to anybody on your team who wants that daily interaction, daily education from you. And that really helps you see which customers are loving and using their oils the most. Those are your like dedicated loyal fans, right? And those are the people that you want to love on. Those are the people that you'll know, like, okay, if they love their oils this much, that they're wanting my education every day and they're engaging with it. Like this is a great brand partner prospect. This is an awesome person who's probably going to be on loyalty rewards. I went to love on them and really build that relationship with them. So yeah, you can definitely pop our saved replies into an email campaign. You can set it however often you want. And all of it is relevant for the month. And so as Teresa was mentioning earlier, we both have had so many instances where, you know, somebody asked a question and maybe they're not in our Facebook group and it's not easy to get them, you know, the information. They mostly communicate by email or by text message. And how often have you, like me, felt like, okay, I need to sit down and write an email to them and answer? And how often have you, like me, felt like, okay, I need to sit down and write an email to them and answer their question? And I wanna make sure that I'm giving them good information, but I don't have the time always to sit down and write them a quality email. And so having these saved replies where if somebody asks me, hey, what about alkaline? I've heard about that. I feel like I might need that supplement. How could I, how can I use alkaline? Where can I learn more about that? Instead of me sitting down and trying to source all the different places where there's information about alkaline on the internet. We have a saved reply about alkaline that we can just say, hey, I'm gonna email you what I have about alkaline. And I'll send you a link in your email. And so I'll just pop my saved reply about alkaline in that email or text to them and fire that off. That took me literally seconds instead of maybe thirty minutes to source all that information and figure out a way to communicate that with them in a timely manner. And for me, it's important to me to communicate with my customers in a timely manner. And I feel like that's an area of struggle in my Young Living business where I always feel bad if I have to keep people waiting for a long time. So I'm really excited that our content can be used to really help you guys build a comprehensive education library of saved replies. In your Get Oiling system so that you never feel that moment of panic of, I don't know how to answer this person's question. Or how to like send them a reply in a timely manner that actually helps them, right? And so if you subscribe to us, you'll get, you know, between twenty to thirty posts a month that you can use in your system. And over a few months, you will have a very comprehensive educational library built with information about specific oils, ways to use them, supplements. How to, how to do things like combat stress, sleep better, help your kids feel better, all of those things. So you can literally use this content in a myriad of different ways to really serve and educate your team in a quality way. Do you have anything to add, Teresa?
Maybe I would say too, that I think really one of our goals personally as brand partners is that we're not just enrolling customers. And that that's a one-time thing, right? I mean, that's your goal too, right? That's why you're on here as a brand partner. So you can continue serving your customers. I want people to fall in love and become Young Living customers for life. Because in a decade, I have seen Young Living grow with me in different ages, phases, and stages of my life. And so I used to think of education as something that I was doing to check a box off and be like, okay, I did it. I can say I did this in my brand partner checklist. And now my focus has changed to, I want them to fall in love with things that are relevant to their needs and their life in every season. Because they're seeing results and education is the vehicle through which that has happened. For, I have team members that have been customers for ten years. That is significant. Particularly in today's market where you can get supplements a lot of different places or oils different places. And so I really think that education is the heart of building a business with longevity. And the Get Oiling platform gives you so many ways to do that. I love the option of being able, our Love Your Guts class and Dr. Mom both have a text opt-in and a landing page. And so I can offer this class in multiple platforms. I have a couple people who they really want to be able to get their content via email. They're like, I have time at my desk every day at work. Please send me an email. They cannot come to a Facebook class. They might not come and check out another offering. But they love that delivered to their inbox. And so I just think there's a ton of versatility. That gives me options to serve my customers in a way that suits them and I love that.
So I wanna show you guys another thing and this kind of tease off of something that I believe it was last week when we were talking about creating and sharing oily recipes. You can double up on saved replies anywhere you use them, anywhere. So if you want to add the Great Day Diffuser Blends to an existing newsletter. Or maybe this Great Day Diffuser Blends, maybe this needs to go in another lesson. Maybe you need to, everywhere this is relevant, you want to put it and you wanna save yourself some time. If we're going into our, let me come back over here to our class, our oily education class. By the way, getoiling.com/moveyourgroups or go to Success Academy and look for our courses. If you want to learn how to create a customer-serving vault, here we go. Here's our oily education where we are compiling all of this great information every time you get a piece of something that is of educational importance. And you are in a place where saved replies exist, either add a saved reply there or create a saved reply from it. So let's just say perhaps, and I don't think I actually have a lesson in here with just diffuser recipes. So I'm just gonna create one called Diffuser Recipes. And it's going to be in the category Recipes. There you go. And I'm gonna go down here and grab that, that Great Day Diffuser Blends. I'm obviously going to modify this. And if you want to modify the version that you have, you can do that in the saved reply itself. But if you'd like to keep what's here, then you could certainly. Keep it wherever you'd like to have it. But then right underneath, maybe I have another recipe that I want to, I want to include. Maybe there's a sway here. So I'm gonna pop that one in here, right? So whatever that might look like for you, you can actually pop in lots of different saved replies into a single place. Or this is a newer and really cool thing you can do in the system. Let's say that you've used some of this content and you formatted it in such a way that it's kind of something new. You've kind of creating, you created something that fulfills a different purpose. Under Saved Replies, you can create a new saved reply from this. So maybe you have a version of this that you want to use with just the graphic. But maybe there's a version that you want to use when you're adding a blurb with your link. Maybe there's a version for your leads. That has your coded leaf link that goes off to purchase these products. Or you have a simpler version that maybe points to the member area or to a more in-depth video for your customers, right? So you can actually, when you are playing around and bundling things together and stacking them and making awesome resources. Out of what you've gotten from monthly content clobber created on your own, you can actually use those from the lesson. From the, the campaign message, from, you know, the, the message editor or from right here or on your blog post to create a brand new saved reply. Which is just such a huge time saver. We, oh, check it out. We've got, Darcy says she's ordered. These are gorgeous. So there are some questions here. Jenny had a question about, she said she received a confirmation email but hasn't gotten the link to claim the bundle yet. Is that coming in the email or is that the bundle for the freebie?
Yep, it should, there's a little bit of a delay. It's where it tags you and then it should send your way. So we'll make sure that that gets sent to you.
Okay, awesome. Allison had a question. Do you have a subscription that has all of it? Or at least the, the OG and the newsletter? Also, do you offer discount if paid annually? So do you guys have annual plans?
We do not currently. That is an interesting thought, so.
And, and I think all of the things that you have right now, they are sort of like à la carte, right? Because not everybody needs everything that you create. So you kind of broke it up into little pieces, right?
Yes.
Okay, another question. Oh, go ahead.
Oh, no, I was, no, you're fine.
Oh, so Allison also asked, are the IPAs in the Brand Partner Hub different from the IPA subscription?
No, so the IPA everyday text is only the social media prompt sent to your phone from my Get Oiling platform number. And so you'll get that every night at eight thirty PM. If you're part of Brand Partner Hub, that actually comes with, it's a little bit of a different checklist. It has, it has five things that you do every single day to build your business. The last one is the same prompt that we would text you. So if you would like to be in Brand Partner Hub and be part of the Facebook community with the training course. That's actually included in that subscription. But if you only want it via text and you're like, I know what all the tasks I wanna do. I don't actually need the whole checklist every day. I just want your idea for how to engage with my audience and share oils and things on social media, then you'd wanna sign up for the IPA Everyday subscription instead. Yeah, good question.
Awesome. Beth had a question here as well. She's already a subscriber of you guys to your monthly content. Is there a way to sign in and claim subscription bundles for Get Oiling or are these in two different places? So is the monthly content club subscription does have Get Oiling content, right?
It does. This has just recently been updated with our new partnership. And so what you would do if you're currently a subscriber is whenever your content is sent to you on the first. There is a Google Drive link that you receive. You can click on that link. And in the post, it's now at the top of the post. It will be for November where it will give you, say, hey, here are your instructions. If you're using this in a Facebook group or if you're a Get Oiling user, here's your resource bundle. Claim it now and it'll be right there.
Fantastic. And there's a question here as well. Let me share my screen here and show you. So you asked where to find the free download. If you go to getoiling.com/mcc. Scroll down just a little bit and you'll see, this is totally free. This is where you get the resource that has been shared today. It includes a campaign. And I wanna talk a little bit about that, what it, what's in that and as well as a bunch of awesome saved replies. And then after that, Allison, I think we can take a quick moment and, and talk about how we can spend some content into a blog post with, with AI. I think we have some time for that. But yeah, Hannah, tell us about what is in the free campaign that you guys have included in that resource bundle?
Yeah, so I set up the campaign as an email or text message campaign that sends one message every week. Because I know a lot of people want a weekly email or a weekly text tip or just a weekly check-in with your team. And again, that's something that always took time, brain space, all the things that I didn't have. And so creating a, using our content to create a, a way that you email your team and using these saved replies. But I popped them into a campaign for you so that you can just have a ready-to-go education strategy via email or text with your team. Using these six posts that we've given you. So I just kind of popped them starting day zero. You can decide to send this into whatever, you know, tagged list on your system that you want to, if you wanna send it to a specific leg or everyone or your prospects or whatever. And then it starts, so one, one message per week, starting on the day that you start your contacts on that campaign. So we just kind of did that for you as an example of how you could use these to create a content strategy for your month. It's super easy to just choose six posts or, you know, choose however many you want, however often you want to communicate with your customers. But just kind of wanted to give you guys an idea of what this could look like. If you just even, if you had the monthly content, you just pulled, you know, let's say six to ten of them and said, I wanna communicate once a week with a email with a series of education. You know, and, and choose your favorites, right? And then you just pop those saved replies into a campaign and schedule them however often that you want. But then obviously, we gave you the saved replies on their own so that you can use them in hundreds of different ways to serve your, your customers. And if you do have a Facebook presence, I know Get Oil and kind of focuses on moving out of your, you know, social media groups if you're not pleased with that. But we do have, everything that we provide with, with Monthly Content Club is also formatted to be able to schedule ahead of time in your Facebook groups. So if you're communicating in that way also, then you can schedule every post for the month and have it done for you in less than a couple hours. Just popping, copy, paste, grab the graphic and schedule it away, one post every day. And we, and we have people who love doing that. And even if you have a virtual assistant, you can have them schedule them into your Facebook groups. Or wherever your oily community hangs out, which is an awesome, awesome perk to that, so.
And if you want content that you can put into your group. So if you have moved your groups off of Facebook and you want to put that same social post content that you would have put on Facebook. Into your discussion room in your Get Oiling member area, you can schedule those out here just the same. And you, you can include images and copy and all of the stuff that they're creating, even if you aren't somebody who's Facebook focused. All of that content is something that you can plug into Get Oiling.
Yeah, every month we're gonna provide, I'll just give you sort of a quick framework of what you can expect when you get a monthly content club subscription. So every month, we provide in-depth posts on the free gifts. So you'll get a promo post plus education about what comes for free at every tier. We also do monthly diffuser recipes, several DIY, you know, recipes to make things using your oils and products. And we also have, I would say the last several months, we've done at least two series, short series that last about a week. So like five to seven days worth of consistent content that has a theme. And so that you, if you wanted to pop those into a class or you wanted to just take that to make one of your email campaigns, that's easy to do. They all kind of go together. They have a similar look and feel and cover the same type of content in a theme. To make it easier for, you know, that to be used in a variety of different ways. And then we also provide a business post, so inspiration, talking, communicating about business principles. Kind of inviting people to come take a look at being a brand partner and then a focus on loyalty rewards. We do at least one post about loyalty rewards. Just encouraging people to hop on that. So that's what you can kind of expect. And then we just kind of fill in with other fun things or relevant information that's going on in Young Living that month.
Fabulous. Kay asked, she says, I'm pretty new to marketing lingo. What is a campaign? So Kay, a campaign in, in Get Oiling specifically, a campaign is a tool that you can use. To send out messages over either a set of dates or over a, a period of intervals. This would also be like, you could call this like a, like a drip series. There's depending on the platform or the software that you use, the, the name of this is slightly different. But the campaign here is essentially just the difference between I am sending something now or I am scheduling something now. And the difference between that and a, a tool that can be used forever. So for instance, if this campaign right here that you can get for free right now, getoiling.com/mcc. If you get this campaign and you apply this to one of your contacts, maybe some of your customers. Right away, on day zero, they're going to receive these two recipes for immunity and calming roller, right? But then the following week, they're gonna get this one. And then the following week, again, seven fourteen twenty-one. So once a week, it's going to automatically, until the end of the campaign or until a point at which they opt themselves out. They're going to receive everything that's included here. So this is a tool that we use for a couple of different purposes. The primary way that we use a campaign is to attach it to a landing page or a form on a page on your website. So that when somebody signs up for something, they automatically receive one or many messages from you. But you can also apply these manually. So let's just say, for instance, I wanted to make this, what I send out for the next, you know, two months. And I want it to start delivering on, let's say, I'm gonna apply this on the thirtieth. And so then we can actually see that these are going to be sent on these days. So that's a really, really quick explanation of a campaign. All right, so Allison had a request to look at how we could use AI potentially with some content like this to create a blog post or a lesson. Since we already have a lesson that we've created, let's go ahead and use it for that purpose. That'll be a fun thing to, to do if you want to sort of expand on something that you've already got. So what I have is, here we go, here's our vault for our customers called Abundant Wellness Education and Support. And then we have an online class in here called Oily Education. So in here, I'm going to go and find my Great Day Protocol here. And I'm gonna go to Write With AI. And I'm going to ask it to write a, write an eight hundred word. And this is completely arbitrary. You could say a thousand, you could say five hundred. I like to give AI the prompt for how long I want something to be. Otherwise, you have no idea what you're going to get, right? So write an eight hundred word article on the Great Day Protocol. As created by Gary Young. And let's see what it comes up with. Don't know how much it knows about the Great Day Protocol. But the, another option might be is that you go to Young Living, to their, their blog. And you find some information about the Great Day Protocol and you copy that, you paste it into here. And you say, here is some information about the Great Day Protocol. Write me a lesson on this with a minimum of five hundred words or eight hundred words or what have you. Here we go. Let's see if, let's see how correct it is. Baller, harmony, joy. Okay. It's got the whole right. Oh, no. Sorry about that. I, Zoom has changed recently and I am just not as good with it as I used to be. So we're in Write With AI. I've asked it to write an eight hundred word article. On the Great Day Protocol is created by Gary Young and it has given us this. Here, let me expand this just a bit and maybe I'll zoom in. So there's an introduction. There's the protocol itself. There's the benefits. And then there's the implementation. I don't know why it gave me all of these word counts, but that's okay. I think all of this is actually quite good. We can copy that to clipboard. And then we can come down here and we can paste. And actually, I'd like to paste plain text because I don't want to get any weird formatting. So I'm gonna go right here to paste plain text. And insert that into the document. And then I can go in and just, you know, remove the silly stuff here, like the three hundred words one. Maybe I can modify this and give this heading so it's nice and large. And then I can do that for all of these, these different headings. And so if you've created this and you like it, maybe you wanna use a version of this for your blog post. Then you can, of course, create a saved reply from this and then use that in other, other purposes. So that's the gist, more or less, of how you would create that. And of course, you would wanna create a. And of course, you would want to create a, a transition in your copy here toward the, the recipe, for instance. And, and of course, you could just move that right down to where you want it to go, or you could have copied and pasted, you know, right here, right above it. So I hope that is helpful. Any other questions or anything else you guys would like to add to, you know, kind of talk a little bit about how we can get into more time-saving or just working more effectively using content like what you guys create?
I mean, I think for me, one of the, the huge benefits of having the newsletter is that that is something my customers refer to over and over and over throughout the month. That they can bookmark that as, as a landing page or as a saved page on their web browser. And they'll be able to go back. They might not have time to shoot off a text message or to search through a group. But that's something that I think our customers have now come to, like be used to having these resources at their fingertips. And that's been a great way to empower them that instead of saying, hey, they'll, instead of texting, hey, what are the promos again? They will just go and either grab that from their email or go to a landing page. And so that has been really, really fun to see as a brand partner. And then as to see for my customers that they're able to be empowered in that way for their education and getting the things that they need to know.
Oh, there's such a great question here that I would love for you guys to answer. They don't see it as repetition from what Young Living sends?
I would, I mean, I have never heard that. I think because everything is written in kind of a different voice. Young Living is speaking as Young Living Corporate and the creators and the owners of these incredible products. And we're speaking as on-the-ground brand partners who are able to frame things a little bit differently. I'm able to, to share things for you as somebody who's had ten years invested in, I know what I need RC oil to do for me on a monthly basis. And Young Living is telling me maybe that it's a promo or that it's a great oil, but they're not telling me, rub this on your chest, diffuse this every night, put it on your feet, sniff this out of the bottle for excellent respiratory support throughout the fall months. So there's a little bit of difference there.
Yeah. We also make it so that it's custom from your team. So some of the customizations include adding your team name. So it's a newsletter from you and from your team of brand partners and your community. And so we have even places where you would link to wherever your community hangs out. So if that's a link to your vault, if that's a link to your Facebook group or a Telegram chat or wherever you frequently hang out and, and communicate with your customers and what you're covering in that month of content. So what, you know, what classes are you having? What are you talking about with your customers? And so I think we provide quite a bit of different and unique things in the newsletter page that adds a more robust experience than just a simple, here's what's free this month. Even including like a custom wishlist of what your favorite products are for each month. That, you know, not sure what to order. Do you need help figuring out what you would even want in November? What do you need to get to help your kids stay healthy and help you get over, you know, whatever you've been dealing with? And so you create a custom wishlist and insert that link so that it literally takes your customers straight to Young Living with a populated list of products that they can add to loyalty order immediately and grab their freebies and grab what you personally have recommended and built trust on your brand for, you know, helping your customers to use on a frequent basis. So we have some, some cool custom things that really may get personalized from you.
Yeah. And I think going back to echo what Teresa was just saying as well, if you are ever at all concerned with repeating yourself, don't be. Because people are not paying attention. And that's, and it's just because of the distracted world that we live in. And this goes to what we've been talking about throughout today's call and how you take one piece of content as a saved reply and you use it in all of the different potential ways that you can. Because you never know when somebody's going to need that information and you don't know if they're opening emails from Young Living, right? If you're, if you're sending emails that are coming from you and they like you and they listen to you, they're going to open your email first. And Young Living might wind up in the promotions inbox and that just might get deleted and they don't know about it, right? So never be, never concern yourself too much with repetition unless you're hounding the same stuff and you're sending it to their email every single day, pushing something, right? That's where that would be a little bit more concerning. There's another great question here. Do you send this stuff at the first of every month? So thinking about like the newsletters, like the, the resources that you have for Get Oiling, for instance, you have an existing subscription. But the, the stuff for Monthly Content Club, that's going to release for Get Oiling, that's going to release November first, right?
Yes, they get it first thing, the beginning of every month, the first day of the month. We don't get information early and obviously we can't share, we don't get it very much early. We get it as early as the silvers in Young Living do. But we, we're legally not able to release any announcements from Young Living before the first of the month. And so we honor their requests from us to do that. We don't provide any information. But because of that, we want it to be relevant information for the month for you. And we know how helpful it is to have at your fingertips, the announcements, the changes, the new products, all those things. And so we just provide it as early as possible that morning of the first for you in an email. So you'll always want to check your email for an email from us that says, hey, here is your November content. Here's your November monthly drop newsletter and it'll have the links and everything for you. And we provide instructions for exactly how to get those set up. Get the promos early in the Young Living USA Facebook group. That's where they, that's where they announce them, if you didn't know.
There you go. Kathy says, so many times I've asked or sent an email or newsletter supposed to be a monthly thing, but it's usually fizzled out a month or, or two for lack of time or content. So this sounds great, right? This is a, Hannah was mentioning earlier that, you know, you can, you could even be pretty good at doing this stuff. But if you drop with consistency, then things start to fall apart. So having this as sort of like that support for you is such a big deal. Let me see. I mean, you, you guys deliver first of the month like always, right? Like so at every, every subscription that you have is going to be something where the content renews first of the month?
It is. And we generally schedule our emails the night before. They usually hit your inbox between three and four AM. That way, even if you're in a different time zone, you're able to access them. If you're an early bird like I am, I'm always up early on the first of the month, excited. I think that there are occasions, very rare occasions where technology happens. And so we've had an occasional one or two people that have maybe not had an email delivered. But ninety-nine percent of the time, it's that they haven't added Monthly Content Club to their preferred contacts. And so it's sitting in their junk box. So we are always available on the first of the month. We're checking our email. We're engaged with you so that if there's something that's happened or if you can't find that email, we can send you one then. So you have it right at your fingertips.
Awesome. Awesome. Great questions today, you guys.
I know we've never missed a deadline, like a delivery deadline.
No, never for people. I'm so sorry. I, I mean, like one person was like, I couldn't find it. Where did it go?
Yeah, I will say like for, for November, obviously we have Black Friday coming. And once again, that's an issue of, you know, that, that information is kept secret until it's able to be announced to everyone. And so same for us. And so what we are planning to provide to our subscribers for Black Friday is we actually let all of our subscribers vote on what they would prefer. And we're providing a like four to five educational posts about some of the sale items. So we're choosing basically the, the items that people are going to be most excited about. We're going to have to wait to see what they are, obviously. But we're going to choose the top items, the, the most like hype items that are going to be for sale that everybody's going to go crazy for and give you some really good in-depth, oh my gosh, I can't believe this is for sale. This is amazing. I'm grabbing six of them. Type of posts tell you exactly what they are, how to use them and things like that for you to be able to either email out, again, using all of the variety of ways. So that will be provided as soon as we can give you that information from Young Living in November. So some of the sale months are a little bit different. But we always provide as soon as we can. As soon as we can get content created and made for you and we have the permission to deliver, we, we will do that. So, yeah.
Fantastic. All right. So now you know, you guys, you've got a fantastic new option available to you to get your content, to keep your people engaged, to not have to think about what you need to put together, create or send. And importantly, a literal page for your Get Oiling site that you can put on your Get Oiling site or you can put in your member area that is a newsletter. You can now write a newsletter that says, go to this website page. And it's beautiful and it has, like they said, all kinds of awesome stuff that you can even customize. And there's so much more. So getoiling.com/mcc, you guys check them out. And I look forward to a lot more with you guys coming out and, and sharing more of what you're up to and showing all the different ways people can save time. Thank you guys so much for being here and sharing with us.
Thank you.
And awesome. Well, you guys will be back here same time next week. Y'all take care. Have a great week, everybody.